Okay, welcome to the October 14th council meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. And let's stand for the singing of "O Canada."
O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Personally, personally, I miss Council Rooney. Okay, record of attendants, absent with regrets, no one. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? I mean, you can declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay. And approval of the agenda. So we do have three additions, actually four. A letter of congratulations, paint the pack, light it up for National Disability Awareness Month, and we're going to add the committee appointments there. So there will be four additions. Is there anything else anyone wanted to add? Three and I have one. Okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the additions, please. Counselor Val Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Counselor Cleveland. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Approval of minutes, Town Council, September 9. Deputy Mayor?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cleveland. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Special Town Council, September 23. Counselor Heather Hatfield. Second by Deputy Mayor. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. And committee, the whole, September 23. Counselor Val Hatfield, second by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so we have public hearing portion now. And we have three items on the public hearing. So what I will do is I will read each of the items, one at a time. I will ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to that issue. And if so, they can come up to the microphone, state their name and where they're from, and share any thoughts they have with us. Council does not debate at this time. We will debate the issue in the agenda. Okay, so the noise bylaw and the... And just the recommended motion is that we repeal and replace the noise bylaw. So I don't really have to go through the whole bylaw. Okay. So does anybody want to speak to the noise bylaw issue? Would anyone like to speak to this one? And a third time, would anybody in the audience like to speak to this one? Okay, hearing none. This is on the agenda later for council. Excuse me. 10B is the fire, backyard fire bylaw. And the motion is that council pass second reading to adopt the open air burning bylaw. Would anyone like to speak to this? I will mention, just for everybody's information, these are all advertised. And so folks have the opportunity to get ahold of us, you know, other than coming here to council. So it's not just this manner. I'll ask a second time, would anybody like to speak to this one? And a third and final time, would anyone like to speak to the backyard fire bylaw? Okay, hearing no one, we'll move this one to the council agenda. And the third one is the water supply upgrade lending program bylaw. And the recommended motion is that we adopt it. Would anybody like to speak to this one? Anyone in the audience like to speak to the water supply upgrade? And I'll ask a third time, would anyone like to speak to the water supply upgrade lending program? Okay, hearing no one, will be moved to the agenda. And that's the end of the public hearing. That was easy. Okay, business arising. So the noise bylaw, so these three are coming up right now, that we just did through the public hearing. The noise bylaw, the recommended motion is that council pass second reading to repeal and replace the noise bylaw. Moved by Counselor Hat, uh, Val Hatfield. Second by Counselor Lesser. Is there any discussion on this one for council? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Oh, sorry, nope, you go right ahead, sorry, Counselor Dairs.
I just wanted to point out, I think, for the public's...
Yeah, just, you know what? It is flashing because, guess who got it wrong again? No, I don't think so. Jeff?
Okay, I'll speak now. I just wanted to point out for the, the public's information that in this case, I believe this is just housekeeping items?
Uh-huh.
And then a deviation you want?
Turn that on. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I think in this case, what I was reading is this is more or less housekeeping items in the bylaw? There's no significant change?
No, no, there's...
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear to the board.
There's changes, but go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, there's, there's minor changes in the decibel levels. But the feature, I think, that is, that is perhaps the most beneficial in this is it does provide the CAO with the ability to provide an exemption for somebody. So for instance, in the last year, there was, there was a business downtown that wanted to hold an outside event. Not ridiculous hours or anything, but the prior bylaw, they ran the risk of running afoul and they didn't want to have a bylaw enforcement officer show up in the middle of an event. So I, what I did is I granted permission on the basis that I felt it was reasonable and, and not likely to cause disruption, and took a bit of risk. And it brought to light that, you know, we really did need something in the bylaw to accommodate special events. So, so that's the primary, most, I think, significant change in, in the bylaw.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. The next one is the backyard fire bylaw. And the recommended motion is that council pass second reading to adopt the open air burning bylaw. Moved by Counselor Lesser, second by Counselor Dairs. Discussion on this one? Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
Um, I just wanted to point out, and, and I'm sure this is being taken care of anyway, but I want to make sure that it's clear what is in the bylaw for the citizens. Because, you know, there's a, there's, we've, we've cleaned it up so it's less complicated. But there are certainly lots of things, you know, you can't burn past midnight. You can't burn if it's blowing too hard, that kind of thing. We need a really good communication strategy to make sure everybody's aware of what those rules are. That's all. Thank you.
Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, I'll, I'll jump in there and just say this out loud so that people understand, is that the backyard or the open air burning bylaw is, is not a carte blanche, go ahead and burn your backyard down. This is a bylaw that permits people to obtain a permit to be able to burn in their backyard. And there are several conditions within the bylaw that must be met. The permit must be, it's a $50 fee to, to get a permit. And it is issued by the fire chief. And the requirements of, of the bylaw will be in the permit. And so I just wanted to be clear that it isn't, this bylaw, if anybody's listening or watching and isn't reading, to understand that there are requirements. It does require a permit before you can burn. The other thing I should say is that the bylaw does not come into effect until it's advertised in the paper. And so tonight, if you're sitting outside and waiting for, for the vote on this, that's a bit too soon. Okay? Uh, the, the ad has to appear in the paper, which won't be next week. It will be the week after because of the timing of our council meeting. So, assuming it passes. So just want to ma- make everybody aware. Uh, don't burn it down tonight and make sure you get a permit.
Thank you. Counselor Hatfield?
So, I'm, I feel as though I'm coming in at the, on the caboose of the train. And I made a commitment when, um, when I was campaigning for this council position, that I was coming onto council to work with the coun- with the council of the day. So, nothing that I say tonight is going to affect my decision, which is to support the council's motion if it passes. Because I, I have made an attempt to go back and look at the rationale and what has gone on. But I do have some questions that I, I hope to have answered to my satisfaction so that I can understand what the, what the goal of the, of the bylaw is. Because, um, so first of all, I think it's important to recognize that not everybody is going to be able to qualify to obtain a permit. Under this bylaw, there are quite stringent requirements with regards to setbacks and other policies. And when I look at the land use bylaw, and I look at what our intention is with regard to minimum size for lots, for residential use, our one-zone lots, the minimum size is 5,000 square feet with 50-foot minimum frontage. And when I do the math, and I've been running around my property and looking at other properties with measuring tape over the last month, um, I think, I'm not sure, but I, I don't think that that lot would qualify under the bylaw for a, for a burning permit. Because it requires a minimum of 30 feet in the side yard. Is that right?
So, your worship, if I may?
Certainly.
Within the bylaw, all of the setbacks I'm looking at here, so 15 feet is, is the setback. So if you have a one-meter-wide appliance, which is, which is the maximum, one meter, and you need 15 feet from any structure or from a side yard, backyard, fence, uh, property line, sorry?
Right.
30 feet wide seems to make, make sense, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Plus a meter.
Okay, so, so, so number one, there are minimum lot size requirements that are going to make it out of reach for many property owners. The other, the other consideration is obviously that it's only for property owners. It's not for tenants. So I, that eliminates quite a few properties in, in the community. I'm assuming that if you have, if you have two tenants on a property, that a property owner is probably not going to give it to one and not the other. So I just, it, it's just important, I think, that we recognize...
Yeah. What's that? Yeah, absolutely. Keep your lighting on so you can just go back and forth.
So, so the intention is that because... The intention is it's the property owner that has to apply, but it's not the property owner who has to be attending the fire. So the property owner has to be aware and consenting that there will be a burning appliance on the property, and they have, they hold the permit. But a property owner, a landlord, could have several properties for which they take out a permit. And if they're multi-unit, they can only have one burning appliance on the property that the tenants would have to share, um, which, which may be the same as some other, maybe a clothesline or something. I don't know. Um, but the, the tenants would have to, if they were going to use it, share it. Um, but it is always the property owner who, who is the, the permit holder.
And, and so just finally, I, I, I just think that in the preamble to the bylaw, it, it speaks to why there was a burning bylaw to begin with, which is that it is to protect the health and safety of, of the residents of the community from noxious odors. And I, I am wondering how burning wood outside fits with the community's sustainability plan. And I'm, I'm assuming that the, the bylaw was written with some of those considerations in mind, the concern that you're, the, the balance between protecting residents and providing people with a recreational opportunity to enjoy their, their backyard. So having said all of that, I, I just think it was, it's important for people to understand that it is not a carte blanche to burn. It, there are very, um, very, you know, there are very many, um...
Regulations.
Yeah, that, it's, so I, I just, I, I just think that, I, I think someone did a lot of work on this policy. And there was a lot of effort, from what I've been able to see, of balancing and mitigating all of those factors. So having said that, I will be supporting the motion.
So all, all your points are very well taken. And, and this was not an easy one. I mean, I've been sitting here, this is my third term. And, and we've continued to, to say no for, for what we believe were all the right reasons. But, but then when you throw everything on the table again, you know, you're right. That balancing act where people have, you know, we want people to enjoy, especially, you know, and Counselor Dairs was saying it very, very well, you know, especially during COVID. You know, we've been, we've been, for lack of a better word, trapped. And, um, you know, just to be able to sit outside by a fire that is within the regulations is something we felt balanced everything else. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a tough one, no matter how you slice it. We're in closed quarters in a town, but it's, uh, great questions. Thank you. Counselor Dairs?
Uh, yeah, I just, I just wanted to reiterate that the, the staff did do a tremendous amount of work pulling this together. And, and there was a lot of really good discussion at this table. Um, and I agree, not everyone can have one. Um, in fact, the, the property that I presently occupy doesn't qualify. I, I don't have room, um, and I can't burn in my front yard. So, uh, it's that simple. But, uh, but I think, um, just because I can't have one, doesn't mean everybody else shouldn't be able to. So, you know, I'll go, I'm going along with it. Anyway, I thank you for bringing those points to our attention.
We're all going to find friends that can have fires. Is there any more discussion on this one?
Question.
Okay, questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Um, motion carried unanimously. And so, as, as the CAO said, we, we just need to make sure that it's clear folks can't, um, and our communications personnel will take care of making certain people know they can't burn.
Sounds like a video coming to you.
Tonight, yeah. Okay. So the third one here is the water supply upgrade lending program bylaw. And it's that council passed second reading to adopt that bylaw. Counselor Cleveland, second by Counselor Heather Hatfield. Discussion on that one? Any questions? Okay, questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. So when's that go into effect? When can people tap into that? We advertise?
Same idea. Any bylaw needs to be advertised before it's effective. And so because of the timing of our Thursday night council meetings and the deadlines for getting advertisements in, in the newspaper, uh, it's, it's almost a two-week delay.
Okay. So here's a question. Because this was done with a specific area in mind. Do we notify these folks? Or do we consider, do we consider the newspaper and...
Oh, the advertise, sorry, your worship. The advertising is, is the notification to the general public that it's there. But if you're aware of people who may benefit from this, uh, you know, feel free to, to reach out to them directly.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Good, thank you. Okay, new business. We have public places bylaw. And the recommended motion is that council pass first reading to amend the public places bylaw as recommended by staff. So go ahead, CAO.
No, you finish.
I was, I was just going to say, after we pass this or discuss this, then it goes to a public hearing, this one? And then it'll come back to us for a second reading. Go, go ahead.
Okay, so your worship, I'll, I'll say this because I, I say it frequently, but this is part of our ongoing process to review every bylaw and policy within the mandate of every council. I think it's a good practice that we started with, with this council, and so far, so good. So the public places bylaw was reviewed by our staff sergeant. And he made several recommendations and comments on the bylaw. In the end, the changes that are proposed here for you tonight are, are simply to bring the definitions in, in lockstep or consistent with the Motor Vehicle Act. So, aside from that, nothing in the bylaw of, of substance is changing. So it will require a first reading tonight. And if it reaches, if it meets your approval, then it will be on a public hearing agenda in November. And, and then there, on your agenda for second reading.
Good, thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for that motion. Counselor Heather Hatfield, second by Counselor Val Hatfield. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. And bike lanes. The recommended motion there is that council support the implementation of a bike lane network on Arterial and Collector Streets of sufficient width and with the approval of the traffic authority. CAO, do you want to speak to that one?
Well, I'll start it. Uh, so, uh, your worship, in, in 2010, the town of Yarmouth, in conjunction with the municipality, the district of Yarmouth, did an active transportation master plan. Uh, that was one of the things that was recommended in our integrated community sustainability plan. In fact, it was already underway while we were writing our integrated community sustainability plan. So it just made sense to, to, to mention it there. But, uh, the active transportation, uh, master plan has been kind of the, the backbone document or the base document we've used over the last 11 years as we've implemented, um, the, the active transportation trails that we've done on along a number of Arterial and, and Collector Streets. Uh, most notably is the current project we have going on on the Haley Road and coming down Forest Street, uh, which is a $2.3 million project when all phases are complete. Over the years, I would estimate we've spent probably, um, including this project that's currently underway, maybe three and a half million dollars on these, on these different active transportation trails. You think about the previous piece of work on Haley Road, the Maude Lewis Trail, uh, the Pleasant Street, uh, active transportation trail, to name a few. And there's a section already done on Stars Road. So one of the things that we never really looked at, uh, when we're, when we've been implementing this active transportation plan is the possibility of bike lanes. We do have several wide Collector and Arterial streets. But we've been kind of focused on putting in the new infrastructure, these active transportation trails. And it just came up in the last couple of weeks. Well, we have a street that we're repaving on Parade Street, which would be the kind of street where you would want to have a bike lane. It is fairly wide. What about we just go ahead and do that? Well, that's easy for, for us to say, but there is an implication to it. And it's outlined in the request for decision. And that is, when you put in a bike lane on a road, I mean, in an ideal situation, you would have parking, you would have a bike lane, and then you'd have a traveling lane. And then you would have a traveling lane, a bike lane, and a parking lane. That takes a very wide street. And we don't have that on Parade Street. So in this sort of situation, it's a choice. Are you going to have a bike lane or are you going to have a parking lane? And so, uh, we, there, there is included in your package a, a design that CBCL, who's our, our consulting engineer on the Parade Street project, they kind of looked at it and said, yes, you have width all the way down, you can do it. Um, that is, that is one option, you could go ahead and do that. But what we would like to do is suggest that there are a couple of things on Parade Street that you might want to take into consideration. One is that you come into the central business district. And parking on street in the central business district is very important to the businesses in that area to be successful. And, and they value that on-street parking like nowhere else in town. And so what we would say is, if, if we were going to put bike lanes on Parade Street, as we approach the central business district, we would merge the bike lane into the regular flow of traffic. And so when you're downtown, your bicycle has to travel with traffic, not in a separate designated lane. The second thing with that particular stretch from, from Pleasant Street down to Main is that you have a school. And we've talked here before about the pickup-drop-off activity around that school. And could we put parking on the opposite side of the road, on the, on the, on the side of the road where the school is? Well, if you put a bike lane in, that's great for cyclists, not so good for parking in front of the school. So a compromise that, that we're talking to the traffic authority with, about, sorry, uh, if, if this was to reach or to receive your approval, um, generally, is that we would look at having a time-specific drop-off opportunity. Not a parking opportunity where you can, you know, lock your car and go inside and, and, you know, teach your day and then come out afterwards. This would be a drop-off only for specific hours of the day. So other than that, the bike lane would have priority. And, and the, the spaces that would be created for the drop-off, for the drop-off zone, would be expected to be clear for cyclists. So that's a compromise that we've talked about as staff, as one way of recognizing that there is an existing community need for an on-street car at the curb. Uh, but at the same time, if you're going to have bike lanes, it's hard to have segments where you have parking and segments where you have bike lane and then back to parking because you end up doing a kind of weevy thing. We think during the, during the pickup and drop-off hour, there would be, I, I'm of the opinion, I'm not the traffic authority, but I'm of the opinion, there's limited, um, safety risk with having the drop-off zone there. Because during those hours, the speed limit through there is 30 kilometers an hour. And a cyclist traveling visibly during the daylight hours at 30 kilometers an hour traffic should be, should be safe. We put signage, of course, if that, if that ends up being the plan, there'd be signage about that in the area to alert motorists as well as cyclists. So, I mean, the back, come back to the, the beginning and the real central question for council is do you want to proceed with bike lanes where the street width exists on Arterial and Collector Streets, the busiest streets in town, if they have sufficient width to allow for a bike lane as well as, um, the traveling lanes for cars? And as I said, these will be approached on a one-by-one basis with operations, with the traffic authority, with the engineer, to ensure that they meet a standard of, of safety, that the road is in such condition as it would be safe, the proper signage is in place, and then we can maintain the bike lanes to a, to a bicycle standard during, during the, the biking season, we'll say. I'll stop in case there's any questions.
Any questions? So what are you looking for us to... Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
Well, just, I guess you've answered the question that I had anyway. And that is the issue of the safety of, and the effect on parking. If you're talking about Parade Streets specifically, if you go further down, um, I guess that still counts as, as CBD, is it not? Or, uh, downtown core, um, say that area where, I'm trying to think here. When you're on the lower part of Parade Street, which is closest to Main Street, is that not, that's still, there's parking there, but is that not part of the central business district?
Yes, so, so the thought, if, if you can visualize essentially around Second Street, that we would merge the bike lane into the travel lane, which...
Right. Okay.
So there would be a few parking spots, um, in that first section of Parade Street. I think they've already been paved with... I think they've already been painted there. Yeah, so the ones that we would propose to have there are already painted. There's, I don't know how many marked, if you recall. Maybe five parking spaces.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilor Hatfield?
Yeah, I, I can't say whether I'm for or against. I just, I feel that, I like the concept. I feel it's visionary, that it's the time to look at it, as you say. Now that we're doing Parade Street, it is the time to kind of think about this, right? And I think it deserves some thought and some consideration. It might be the time to do this, because we have looked at active transportation, and that's been one of our priorities for the town, is active transportation, and it would be a way to implement that. So, I think, I don't know how soon this has to be decided on. Jeff, because they are working on this project now, what are we?
So, if I can just respond to that. So, first of all, I never like to bring something to the table the first time and need a decision on it. Usually, this would show up at a committee of the whole meeting. But this just occurred, frankly, occurred to me like last week. So, and Mark is ready to lay, Mark is ready to put asphalt down and paint, you know. So, I think I could go out on a limb here and say that we could, could we hold the painting off for two weeks? So, I put him on the spot. So, you don't need to make a decision tonight, but if we're going to take advantage of the Parade Street opportunity, then a decision perhaps in two weeks when we meet at COW, if we could have a special council meeting, if you want to. Right, if you look at this and you say, and it'd be great, you know, if you haven't already, to go look at the street and to consider the implications. If you want to go forward with this at this time, that's one way that you could get it done and capture the painting opportunity. But this is not, you know, this has been 11 years we've had a plan. So, if you decide you're not comfortable with it at this location, at this time, you can take the pass. And we can revisit this for another street or at another time. I never like to put council in a corner, because I think that could lead to a decision you'll regret. So, at least you have two weeks, and honestly, you have as much time as you need. We've had 11 years.
Councilor Daers?
Yeah, I think I share Councilor Hatfield's hesitancy in this case. I mean, these streets, when they were built, were to accommodate horse and buggy, I think, rather than large trucks and buses. I'd like to actually take the time to go over and kind of get my head around what it's going to look like. Do we know how many parking spots on that particular part of the street are going to be eliminated?
Don't know off the top of my head how many were actually painted. So, once you got up to a certain point on Parade Street, there were no longer parking spaces painted. They're only painted back so far. I don't know how much further than Second Street. We can look at some aerial photography and get that for you. But the street is, the essential issue, and I mean, you can picture Brunswick Street the same way, is very wide street, but not quite wide enough to have everything. So, that brings about a choice. And on Brunswick Street, there is, I don't know if there's any painted parking, but there's certainly parking, because the street is wide enough for it, and cars can park against the curb without being in traffic. So, if we were to do Brunswick Street, that would eliminate the possibility of on-street parking throughout a street that is almost, almost all residential the whole way. And so, the compromise or the choice you're making is that you're saying that the public street will be used for public transportation at the expense of, you know, a private habit, or in some cases, habit, I guess, of parking a vehicle in the street, because that opportunity would be lost when you put a bike lane. A bike lane that you could park in doesn't quite work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Would this, the bike lane, would that then connect up to the Haley Road Trail as well, Jeff? Is that to, for that active transportation?
So, ideally, the bike lane would go all the way up to Haley Road. But I suspect, once you get past Pleasant Street at this point, the asphalt is narrower. You don't have curbs like you have on this end of Parade Street. So, we would approach this much the same as we are approaching the AT Trails, is when the opportunity is there, we'll proceed. If the opportunity isn't there, it'll be kind of a situation where, once you go through that intersection, now you're riding with traffic. So, not ideal, a little bit hit and miss as we build it, but it would, whenever council is ready, that's when it starts. And not until.
Anyone else? Councilor Hatfield?
I just want to make sure that I'm clear about what we're being asked to do. This is a policy decision that we are being asked to make here tonight, or to consider in that, once we have approved as a policy, that the town will be moving towards developing bike lanes where feasible. That policy will then begin to begin, to be initiated by staff. Is that, am I right on that? So, yeah. Okay, all right, good.
Councilor Cleveland?
Okay, so, the implication of that, which I guess I was leading towards, is moving forward, if we were to do this, and you're looking at this in a case-by-case basis, moving forward, would every one of these have to come before council, before you did them? Or would staff just be able to go do them?
Well, the answer is no and kind of. So, you know, we're a small group, we work good together, we work well together. We're talking about a very specific first section, and, you know, right away, we recognize as staff that, you know, when you eliminate parking, when you make change, there will be reaction in the community. Some of it positive, some of it not so much. So, we weren't, even though council adopted the plan 11 years ago, we didn't take that as license to go and start painting lines on the road and let you guys deal with the fallout. We brought it to you for a discussion and for your consideration. And again, there's no, there's no feet to the fire here. Going forward, each of these segments, each of these streets would have to be looked at individually for the, you know, the width, what's possible. And if we thought that there was going to be outcry, and I think we'd see with the first segment how much outcry, you know, or how much appreciation or lack of appreciation there is, you know, we would telegraph the punches with council to say, look, here's what we're looking at, here are the implications. From my point of view, if, this is not mandatory that we do this. This is a, this is an additional service that we can provide to the community. So, where things are mandatory, you know, we're going to do them if we have the policy or the bylaw or the authority to do it. In this case, where it's discretionary, I would see us bringing it to council. Now, the Traffic Authority will hold us to specific standards, and engineering will hold us to specific standards, so that if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, as right as we possibly can. And if we can't do it well, then we simply won't do it. So, the discretion for council becomes, you know, are we going to do this? Like, how do you feel about it? If council just doesn't want Brunswick Street, or Main Street, or Water Street, or whatever street we're talking about, if that's just a no-fly zone for council, staff are going to respect that. Now, I say that as your CAO. You know, you may decide tomorrow, I'm not your CAO, and then you're left to, you know, deal with the policy. But I think it works best when we work together and, you know, try to build out an AT plan if it's the right time, if it's the right place. As I always said, we're your advisors, right? Your engineers, your planners, your accountants, we're your advisors, but you're the deciders. We give you advice, and you decide whether it's the right advice at this time and this place. And it isn't always the case, right? As we've seen in recent months. So, if this is not the right time, an opportunity to begin this process, that's fine. You know, we've had this on the books 11 years, and that's only to say that we haven't taken the initiative as staff to bring it to you or to a previous council to say, we think now is the time. We're bringing it to you now because there's a particular opportunity, but, you know, that's, that can, that can go by the wayside. Doesn't mean it will never happen. It just might mean it's not the right time and place.
Thank you.
Good. Sorry, I'll weigh in, but we got Councilor Daers and then Councilor Lesser.
Yeah, just very quickly, I guess I'm starting to get my head around it, but I'm wondering if there's any way to telegraph our punch on this one.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, there is. And so, we didn't telegraph it very well to you, right? And if we don't telegraph it to the community, that's likely to come back to you, right? So, one of the things that we could do, if you want to, if you want to go at this in a way that is more engaging with the community, you know, we can, we can do a little engagement process with the community and remind the community we have this plan, create some maps, you know, share it with the community, talk about it, you know, and open it up, you know, people have questions, concerns. We have our platform, our Get Involved platform, that, you know, we can, we can do it online, we can do it in person, we can have surveys or whatever you call them, poster boards here in the lobby of Town Hall. We can put them other places in the community for people to see what's being considered and provide feedback.
Did you want to, I'll let you respond and then I'll go.
Just to say that I, I'm buoyed by the fact that your communications expert is not against that agreement. So, thanks, Mike.
Councilor Lesser?
So, the other part of this, it looks like we have, if we were to go with it, we have to pick between two options? Or is that, is that, like, there's option A with a lane on either side, or both sides, and then option B with just one bike lane? So, is this, is that like specific for Parade Street? Or could it change on different streets?
I think I would say that I would, you can go with one lane on one side, you can go with one lane on each side. I would never, although there's a diagram, I would never go with two lanes on one side. I say never. Never's a long time. I'd have to look, I would personally, and I think Traffic Authority would want to look very carefully at that, having two-way traffic bikes here, two-way cars here, that that might in itself be a bit confusing unless there's some form of separation. So, that's my opinion off the top, Councilor, but never say never. There may be situations where that is the best solution, so.
I'll tell you what I think of this one. I look at it, and I, the first thing I do is I ask the question, who do we want to be when we grow up? And I always go there. I guess part of visionary leadership, where you're not so, I'm not so concerned with the little pieces, because we have the experts that do that. But I'm always very, very concerned and thinking about when we're not even at the table, you know? And in five years, and 10 years, and 20 years, what is this town going to be? And when I see bike lanes, I get really excited, because it's just, it's such, it really is, it's revolutionary, revolutionizes like a small town. These things don't happen in small towns. I love the idea of, you know, chucking on the telegraph and the punches, but remember, if we did that, we probably would never have put money into the facade program. We wouldn't have one bump out, we wouldn't have any greenery downtown, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have a lot of the things that make us stand out, that make people comfortable, that draw people to Yarmouth. And I guess I need to start sharing the emails and stuff I get, because I get them, and I get many of them, from people that just drop by, and they just say, wow, we just can't believe what we're seeing. What we expected and what we're actually coming to are two completely different places. They just, the expectation for Yarmouth, we are, we are just punching above our weight every single time. And I think it's because council, the last couple, council have just had the courage to, to look big and dare boldly. If I, I know that sounds cliche and it sounds fluffy, but, but I think we, we're sitting here and we know, we know what we want to be when we grow up. We know what we want our children and our grandchildren to experience. And I'm also sitting here saying, you know what? When you say bike lanes, the biggest fight is going to be, we just took away two parking spaces. That's what it always ends up being without the bigger-picture thought. So, those questions have to be answered respectfully, you know, for the public, so that they understand. If we're going to engage the public, it needs to be very clear and concise, and the way that we do it. It's not like a social media weigh-in. That's not how we do business. But this is, it's forward-thinking, and, you know, eight years ago, I think active transportation, correct me, Jeff, if I'm wrong, but these active transportation trails were kind of just a figment of out there, except for that Pleasant Street one. And I remember then Mayor Mooney saying to me, he said, but look at Pleasant Street. It's not three feet anymore. It's wide and it's accessible and it's, and until you see it and until you use it and until you understand the capacity it has to, to make everything accessible for so many more people, then you kind of close those doors. But I think these doors here have been opened, and I don't know how we figure out the bike lanes, we do our homework, but I am 1,000% in favor right now. I just work backwards. I can see the vision, and I'm there already, and then take the steps back and see, you know, how does it roll out the best? So, this excites me. And I can't wait to say, if we go through this, I can't wait to say to the rest of the world, guess what? Little small-town Yarmouth, thinking big again, because that's what we do. So, I'm excited about it. Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was thinking when I said it's visionary, like it's, I think of being in Europe and everywhere, there's bike lanes, and it's just a norm. And for, and I think Halifax fighting now to get bike lanes and to find room for bike lanes, and here we have the opportunity to have room with, you know, that are being made, and then when we're doing another project, so it's not going to cost a lot of money, and it may be a really good place to test, you know, the usage and safety of bike lanes. And it can meld into what we're already doing with the active transportation route. It's kind of just, just make it all part of that, right? And I think it's, so I think it's a really opportune time to do that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about.
Councilor Daers?
Well, sorry to speak again, but as I said, I'm starting to get my head around it, and perhaps it is time to just get her done.
Yep. Did we have a motion on the floor yet? The motion, I'll tell you what the motion is. That council support the implementation of a bike lane network on Arterial and Collector Streets in sufficient width and with the approval of the Traffic Authority. Seconded in that. Councilor Hatfield? Okay, any more discussion? Speak up. Go ahead, okay, who's first? Okay, Councilor Lesser?
My only two concerns are the school and what that would mean around the school, and I think that part's been answered. I don't think, I don't think it's going to impact parking around the schools. And then the second part is, how many parking spots are we talking about losing? Because that is the biggest question I think that we'll hear from is, people, when you take parking away, people are upset. But I agree with everything that you guys have said, that I think I'd like to see the project done and move forward. But just curious how many parking spots that we might end up losing.
You looking that up, Jeff? Okay, Counselor Hatfield?
Yeah, while he's looking that up, I'll just comment that I think the comfort that I get from voting in favor of this is that we are doing it with the Traffic Authority. Right, you know, we're not just winging this. This is under the guidance of Traffic Authority. And they're going to make those good assessments and professional assessments on the parking and safety issues, so.
Yeah, I completely agree with that. That's part of the safety net as well. They're, especially in a school zone, right? And heading into the downtown. So the CAO's kind of taking a peek there. And you know what? There's, whatever number you're going to give us, there's also parking at Zion. So go ahead.
Your worship, unfortunately, I don't have access to a high enough resolution aerial photograph to be able to pick out the paint. Clearly, that I feel comfortable to say, it appears that there are no painted stalls beyond Second Street anyway. So you had a wide street that perhaps cars parked casually, but not necessarily painted stalls. That's what it looks like in this, but it's not high enough resolution that I can say that definitively. So I could get that answer if I was at my computer in my office where I have access to another set of photographs, but I can't answer that question right here.
Counselor Lesser? Oh, wait a second. Counselor Cleveland?
So, at this point, I'm not prepared to support that motion. Not at the moment. So you put the bike lane, you paint the bike lane area in past Second Street, where there are no markings now. People do park there. There's no parking spots there. People park there and not look, you know, crossways at it. Everybody does. There's, you know, a lot of activity on that street. So you put that lane in, got a straight line, painted very neatly and nicely. What's to stop somebody from just parking there? Are we going to write tickets? How are we going to enforce that? Yeah, but are we going to write tickets?
If they're parked illegally, we are.
So outside of the downtown core, parking violations are monitored by the RCMP. And so if they were driving by and they saw a car parked in a bike lane, I would expect they would be ticketed. Now, they might receive a warning if it's new. There would be signage, you know, no parking, bike lane, whatever. And, but that's how it would be enforced. Sunny wouldn't be traveling the bike lanes. He just does the central business district.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lesser?
So if there's no painted bike parking spots, there would be a bike lane that, when it gets to around Second Street, would merge back into traffic. Not losing, so we would accomplish, we wouldn't lose parking spots that are officially a parking spot. Although you can make any, I guess you can make anything a parking spot if you want. And we would also get the bike lane in place. Is that, is it that simple? Hold on.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Question, I think if, I suspect that Counselor Cleveland wants to mull this over a bit more. And so I would be prepared to change my motion to, let's revisit this in two weeks' time. Next meeting.
So, your worship, I think the correct thing to do at this point with the motion on the floor is to table it. Table the motion to a special counsel meeting on the 28th.
Okay. You good with that? Do I need a motion to table? Or just going to table it? Okay. Moved and seconded to table the motion. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, 28th. So I guess the idea is to get our ducks lined up, get any information, any questions we have, send them through the CAO and we'll discuss then.
And I will find out how many painted parking spots there were just for that information.
But can you also find out how many are available at Zion across the street?
Yes.
I know people like to park. Sort of like people say there's no parking downtown if they can't park in front of the drugstore they're going into. But there's plenty of parking downtown. Okay, good. Let me see, NSFM conference, 11th hour because the early bird registration ends today, so we probably missed that. It's November 3rd and 4th. Has anybody signed up? You have? You have? Did I? Can you sign me up?
Did I?
I'm on the board, so I probably forgot to sign up. Yeah, so would you sign me up, please? Anybody else?
Yes, please.
Okay, Counselor Dayers? It's virtual. It's the 3rd and the 4th. You want to sign up? Okay, Bell Hatfield? Anybody else want in on that? And it's virtual, so you can hop in and out. You can't vote unless you're online, so. All right, we good? All right, yeah, all four party leaders have been invited to share their visions for moving Nova Scotia forward as well. So, and they have, I've never used this, but that interactive feed loop, have you used that, Jeff? So that allows us to network with each other. Somehow, I'm not sure how that works online, but it's a little bit different from just simply being on Zoom, I think. So, yeah, so the 3rd and the 4th. So Lindsay, you'll get that and then just get the information out to us. Thank you, folks. Okay, reports, council advisory committees. That's you there, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
The recommended motion that council adopt the Town of Yarmouth wellness incentive policy.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Lesser?
Just for the public's sake, part of this is having corporations or businesses or workplaces buy into memberships. So you would get a reduced rate for Mariners on Main, I think of 15% off. But then also the employer could put money into it as well. So it would be, and it talks about it in the policy, about mental health and, you know, being preventative upfront. So it is a good thing for, you know, businesses to consider giving their employees additional money towards that. It's, yeah, it's a win-win, I think. I think businesses that look after that kind of, that part of it, I think have more, their employees are more energized and ready to work. So hopefully, there'll be a lot of people that take part in the corporation part of Mariners on Main.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
The recommended motion that council send thank-you letters to Yasta, Yarmouth Recreation, Argyle Recreation and Mile East Productions for their work on the 55-plus schemes.
Second by Counselor Bell Hatfield. Any more discussion?
Question?
All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
The recommended motion that council send a letter to the province requesting them to review the traffic study around the high school.
Second by Counselor Lesser. What's, I need, I might need a reminder. We haven't...
Yeah, so we talked about, a concern was brought forward about a particular student and the walking route to school and potential hazards. And during that discussion, we talked about maybe some alternatives. But I pointed out to council that prior to the school being cited at that location, the province undertook a traffic study, a traffic impact study. And there were a number of recommendations out of that study made to ensure that there were safe routes to school and that the road still performed and the intersections around that area still performed well. We're several years into the life of that school now and much of the infrastructure that was recommended has been built. We've added more to that with our active transportation trails. And in fact, we're cutting an active transportation trail across the front lawn of the school as we speak. So asking the province to come back and review that study and determine, you know, if in fact, things are functioning as they had anticipated. And if not, maybe to undertake additional improvements that would ensure that the routes were both safe and effective. One of the things we talked about as an example of a potential fail was the bus lay-by that exists on Forester. A piece of concrete that was installed for the purpose of buses queuing outside of the property while buses loaded and cleared. That's used exclusively, I don't say exclusively, it's used for vehicle parking as curbside. I was going to say student parking, but I can't say that they're all students, so. But certainly every day that schools in, that area is filled with passenger vehicles and doesn't serve its original intended purpose. So having the province review that study, maybe redo it and determine if in fact there are any other improvements, I think is only in the best interest of safety and, you know, it should be undertaken by the province.
Good. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, deputy. Citizen Advisory Committees, that's you, Counselor Cleveland.
Thank you, your worship. Just one motion that council pass first reading to amend both the municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaw to fix some omissions and errors that were identified in the planners report.
Okay, wants to second that one. Counselor Hatfield? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Any questions for committee chairs? Counselor Hatfield?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to make an announcement that we were thrilled to get word last week that the Town of Yarmouth had received the Outstanding Achievement Award for Floral Displays from the Communities in Bloom National Symposium. For a town that once had concrete box planters and plastic flowers, we have come a long way. This award would not have been possible without the dedication of many. So a big shout out to the Communities in Bloom Committee, volunteers and town park staff who spent many hours planting, weeding and watering. The Yarmouth Garden Club, who have made Brown Street Garden now a place of beauty. The local businesses who have supported the planters program on Main Street. And last but certainly not least, the town councils, both past and present, who has set the beautification of our town as a priority. It has taken many years to get to where we are today. And I just want to thank all that have helped us along the way.
Lots of great work done. Thanks, Counselor. Anybody else? Any questions for committee chairs? Good? Okay, so we're on to additions. The letter of congratulations. The recommended motion there is that council send a letter of congratulations to Melissa Stone on her world championship for weightlifting on Team Canada. Wow. Yeah, it is amazing. And I think every one of us has said at one time or another, "We need to celebrate that." So the letter would be a good start. Okay, who wants to make that motion? Okay, Counselor Cleveland, second by Counselor Lesser. Go ahead, deputy?
So just so people are aware, Melissa traveled to Sweden on September 25th. She received a silver medal in squats, a gold medal in bench press, a gold medal in deadlifts, which secured her a gold overall. And she was also a member of Team Canada M1 Women. There was four of them and they come third overall. So she came home with five medals. So very well represented, we were.
On a world stage. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Paint the park, deputy?
Last week, I was lucky enough to take a tour of the old South End School. It looks great. Boys and Girls Club are doing a great job. Playground up back, the lighted courts are being used every night. But I got to visit South Church and they are in the south wing of the South End School. And they would like to do some community engagement and kind of get involved in the South End area. And a while back, we had, council had approved a paint project and CAO and I had met with some kids and entered COVID. And here we are, not much was done. So on October 23rd, they would like to have, kind of invite the community to come out, grab a paintbrush, paint the outside structures a solid color. So nothing too designy. You don't have, if you know how to move a paintbrush up and down, you're welcome to come. Afterwards, there'll be a little barbecue. So just kind of that pride that you get from kind of cleaning up your own neighborhood and, you know, making it look nice. And hopefully that way it keeps the graffiti and stuff off and end the day with a nice barbecue or whatnot. So this is just more for information purposes that this will be happening on October 23rd. And I'm told that as of Sunday, the churches will be putting a big push out to kind of let the community know and whoever at this table or who's listening who would like to come out and help, come on out and grab a paintbrush and let's make her look pretty.
Thank you. They're actually, I should mention this now because you know about this. They're doing something called Love Week as well. And it's just, it's all community-based. It's how, it's, I guess he explained it to me this way. He said it's all hands on deck all over again. So, you know, what can you do to help your community? And it could be anything. It could be raking leaves. I think last year, the youth were, I looked out the office window and the kids were over in Frost Park raking up the leaves. They were doing some of the side streets, doing errands for seniors. So there's a whole week, I mean, not that we don't do that all year, but there's a whole week called Love Week and it's coming up. I think it's next week, deputy, is it? I think it's next week.
It starts on Sunday.
Yeah, and it's dedicated to those types of things. They've got businesses on board sponsoring things. And it's just, you know, for people to sit back and say, you know, "How can I invest in my community?" Whether it's helping a senior or, you know, mentoring someone, raking leaves, anything like that. So if anyone's hearing about Love Week, look it up and you'll find lots of stuff there. Light it up for National Disability Awareness Month. I just have to find this. So the request, there was a request here. Remember what the request was, CAO?
Your worship, there's a letter from Southwest Employment Services and they're making council aware that they're challenging businesses to shine purple and blue light on disability inclusion. So on October 21st, they're encouraging, for one night only, businesses to light up with blue and purple to, I guess, bring awareness and bring light to inclusion and disability. And so I think the request here for council is to participate. And, your worship, if it's council's wish, we can challenge our dedicated park staff to see what they can do for us.
And I can't wait to see what they'll do. They are, they're golden. There's no other way to say it. So maybe a motion to have staff take care of this for us. Purple and blue lights. Okay, Counselor Dayers? Second by Deputy Mayor? Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried and maybe... Motion carried and maybe we can get that information out as well on our, on our sites and encourage the public and businesses. Okay, and D is committee appointments. So basically from the committee of the whole, just previous to this council meeting, we went over all our committees and we designated folks and re-designated and talked some people into things. Counselor Bell? Didn't take much to get you to take a load of work on. Thank you for that. Okay, so the motion would basically be to affirm the committee appointments. Okay, Counselor Hatfield, seconded by the other Counselor Hatfield. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of invoices. Deputy Mayor? Seconded by Counselor Hatfield. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Date of next meeting? So we're going to do a motion here that Council change the date of the next council meeting from November 11th to the 18th because of Remembrance Day, obviously. Okay? Counselor Hatfield, seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Counselor Lesser, you're going to have to take that one out of your, out of your schedule.
It's funny, I just looked and my schedule's so messed up, I put committee of the whole that night. So I don't know how.
He did, he did like, I want to say every second week or something?
I did, yeah, every four weeks I did counsel instead of every, or the second and fourth Thursday.
Your worship, I misspoke on, on one item earlier today and Town Engineer brought it to my attention. I'd like to just bring it to your attention for, for the record. When I was speaking about the, the work, the design work we had done by the engineers that were working on Parade Street, I mistakenly identified the firm as C B C L. Although we do work with C B C L on a number of projects from, from year to year, the firm of record on that one was Stantec. And so my apologies to them for, for not giving them proper credit and I just wanted to correct the record to you.
Thank you. If we were at Rotary Club, I could pay a dollar and make an announcement. My son works for Stantec now. He does. Yeah. Right? That'd be two bucks. Okay, so did we vote on the meeting? Okay? And I'm looking for a motion to go in camera, please. Thank you, Counselor.